Three meeting. The Norfolk County Commissions to order. On Wednesday, March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty three. Governor Mara Healy signed into law chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty three. An act making appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty three, which includes a two-year extension. The option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. Thank you. And now I'm going to ask you to join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which is with us. One nation under God. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to our meeting. I'm going to call a roll Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum.
Uh, do we?
Item number three is a call for executive session. Yeah, Commissioner Collins.
I can do that. Before we get into that, Richard, I just wanted to run this by you. So do we have permission if we have any votes today to sign your name with the stamp?
Yes, permission granted. And as I said, I, I have another meeting with the Aggie School, and that's why I'm remote today.
We'll keep that in mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll go right to item three. A motion for an executive session pursuant to Master and Law, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty one, subsection A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I second that motion. That's read.
Okay, and the chair has declared.
I believe. Motion made and seconded. Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Shea votes to go into executive session. We're now in executive. Okay, we're back on regular session meeting on our December sixth meeting. We're at item number four. Minutes of the open session meeting of November twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty three for approval.
I will approve it in a minute as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
This is approved. Number five appointments, we have none. Number six, public comment. All of our meetings, we have a tenant in our agenda that allows for public comment whether in person or over the Zoom. If any, any public comment right now, now's the time to make it. And further, we'll inquire of Director Cronin if he had anybody.
I'd ask Dan Caprada to meet himself, please. Uh, I had no public comments.
No, you've received nothing.
No, sir.
Last call for public comment out in Zoom land. Any other comment? We have none. Thank you. We're gonna go to number seven, whole business. I have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration. We have about six, uh, six today.
Okay.
Mr. Peter, I got those if you want. Maintenance, unless there's changes. I'm gonna do it, Peter.
Um, if it's okay, Richard, I'll, I'll just do it because there were some changes up here, okay?
Okay, yeah, go ahead. No, please, go ahead. Go ahead.
So, uh, the first personnel paper to be considered for, um, for the commissioners consideration is a notice of return to position for John, for John Vignoni of Bridgewater as main supervisor at the rate stated effective twelve, one, twenty three. Um, move to, um, um, sign that on behalf of the commissioner.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? It is the vote next.
Uh, the second is a notice of retirement for, uh, Robert Page of Quincy as senior building custodian, um, effective twelve, twenty nine, twenty three. And congratulations to Mr. Page. My, my motion is to sign the retirement paper.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
And the next one is notice of retirement for John Marinucci of Dedham as roving utility worker, uh, effective twelve, twenty nine, twenty three. Congratulations to Mr. Marinucci. And, uh, my motion is to sign the retirement paper.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
There was, um, there was some papers sent over from the registry, uh, for one particular employee. Uh, uh, Udine, Udine Sanchez of Norwood as a senior clerk. And, uh, there were some discrepancies. So the, the two sheets that were sent over, um, they were both, uh, inaccurate. So, um, so I, I'd like to make a, a different type of motions to rehire Udine Sanchez of Norwood, Mass as a senior clerk, junior grade, uh, nine slash step seven annual salary, um, at forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-two cents. So moved. And that was, uh, in accordance with HR directive.
Okay, I'll second. I want to talk about it.
Okay, yes, I'm gonna open it up.
So I got that.
Go ahead. Michelle is here with us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we got the letter today from Michelle. Uh, I'm a little troubled by this. I'd like to see if we could actually take no action and table it because, uh, uh, this is coming out of the registry, right? And HR said the calculation or the, the rate is incorrect. Did the Registry of Deeds have an opportunity to review this prior to our actions today? I don't want to get into this, another lawsuit or him saying we're taking action without involving him. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to have this letter be sent to him as well to understand what we're doing and then take the vote next week?
I'm gonna call on John and, and Michelle. John?
Just saying.
Respectfully, Commissioner Stady, thank you for the question. There was, um, numerous correspondence with the Registry of Deeds in this matter.
Okay.
As this particular, um, employee is a reentry, she, um, previously worked for the registry back in April of two thousand and twenty-three.
Right.
There are certain personnel rules that fall into place. So supplement, uh, subsequently, we contacted Labor Council, Michelle McNulty, who gave our human resources director very specific instructions on how to proceed with this request. We are literally following the advice of your labor council to take the two requests that were sent over after extensive dialogue with the registry.
But that's fine. I like that as an emotion. That wasn't added, that was not the motion. If, if, if HR is recommending it, with all due respect to Michelle and on the advice of council, I'm fine. I'm fine. I didn't hear that. I didn't know, I didn't let the labor council weigh it in. I didn't know that.
Column, column and my motion to say that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Stady.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this matter of Udine Sanchez returning to work as a senior clerk?
Just to be clear, so the registry, what was over there, whatever it might be, they had understanding that there was a problem and this was reviewed by HR and council for us recommendations, correct?
Correct.
For the record, that's fine. Perfectly fine. Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Last call. Motion made and seconded. Any other con, any other comments about this senior clerk position at the Registry of Deeds? Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Welcome back. Udine. Last one is a return to leave, notice of a return to work and leave of absence for an employee effective twelve, one, twenty three. We have a motion.
I'm sorry.
Return.
Yes, I'm sorry. Notice of return to, uh, to work and leave of absence for an employee effective twelve, one, twenty three. I'm, I'm like that motion.
Sure, I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Return to work. Thank you. Ten, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Okay. Uh, number nine, employee handbook conveyance.
I'm sorry, number nine, I want, I want to be sure your Commissioner Stady listens to this.
Yes.
Employee handbook conveyance to commissions for the first reading. I'm gonna have Director Cronin tell us what he's giving us here.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Good afternoon, commissioners. With Michelle Avedini, um, over the last two years, the county has embarked on an effort to update its, um, employee handbook. The commissioners may recall, the original handbook was drafted in nineteen eighty-seven. It's undergone numerous edits. Um, it is not a platform document that can be electronically shared and used. Um, it required, uh, substantial updates. When funds were appropriated for this, um, handbook, uh, revision on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, counties took, um, the opportunity to contract out the work to the Collins Group. Throughout two thousand and twenty-two, uh, staff from the Collins Group worked directly with Michelle to advance new policy content, uh, and recommendations for the improvements that, um, eventually had become the final employee handbook. Throughout two thousand and twenty-three, uh, and following the feedback from the Collins Group, um, the book itself was assembled and formatted, uh, so that eventually, earlier this year, it began a series of proofing loops and reviews, first by labor council, then by the department heads, um, and then finally the schools, and a last read by our labor council following all edits received from those various sources. Um, I've read this document, uh, numerous times, uh, but I want to take this moment to, um, share my high praise for Michelle, um, Avedini and the work she's done to pull this document together before you today, uh, that represents new policies, new initiatives for the county, um, that are quite frankly contemporary in many, many public institutions. I'll yield to her in a minute, and she can explain some of the highlights and changes that, um, are included in this document. But it is our hope today to convey this to you, uh, for your read over the next week or so, and possibly have you as early as next week accept it as the new active employee handbook for Norfolk County. Um, we, uh, will also be sharing this document with the various unions as required by collective bargaining for any of their concerns relative to these changes and any impact bargains that may come forward as a result of that. Nevertheless, its applicability to employees who are non-union, um, will commence immediately upon your approval. One final note, we also want to extend our thanks to Superintendent John Martin. Um, when I arrived, I was told that there was a handbook that had advanced, um, quite far back in two thousand and eighteen and is, as a result of a variety of factors, including, um, Aggie school input, that document never advanced to, uh, the stage. Um, working with John Martin, we, um, received numerous edits, very constructive, I might add, um, that we put under consideration, some of which we adopted and are reflected in this product. This particular document, for the most part, does not affect school operations or the school's legal authority to manage their, um, their, uh, their administration as required by Mass General Law. And that's one of the things that Labor Council wanted to ensure, that there were sufficient barriers between what this handbook would achieve, uh, and what the school's handbook does. So we think we've achieved, um, to some great extent, um, a document that is, um, very well advanced from its prior iteration. Uh, the benefits of the commissioners going forward is, as any policy, it's a living document. It can be updated as you see fit, and I expect it will be. We will learn from any changes that are in here. We will get better at, um, various policies over the next several years, and we'll track those changes. This document with all your policies will now reside on the county's website, so every employee has access to them. And then finally, um, upon approval by the commissioners and in the final stage of this, we intend to distribute this document to all in paper form, all county employees. They need to sign off on it. Uh, that's part of their employee handbook, uh, requirements at this point. So everybody will have a copy of it electronically and in hard copy. But I would, I want to, um, convey this to you today with an understanding that you get back to us with any thoughts or changes by next week so that we can, um, possibly take a vote for acceptance.
Any questions, Commissioner? We're, we're gonna take it for a week to review. Any questions right now?
Are you looking to get action on it? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. Yeah, um, it's hot with the Zoom. So are you looking for action on this at the next meeting or the one after that? Next meeting?
I'm thinking December thirteenth in a week.
Okay. Could I ask through the chair, uh, a, a, a question I had?
Sure.
Yeah, um, it would be really helpful if you could maybe, and first of all, first of all, congratulations to you and, uh, HR and everybody else involved. That's an incredible document. Having just got it, though, haven't had time to dive into it deeply, but I will try. I will try, um, this weekend. Could you perhaps help us a little bit and maybe highlight before, uh, you know, in a timely manner, some of the key differences that have been a result of the new document as opposed to the old? I mean, a lot of it, I'm sure you adopted some of the stuff that was in there, but there were also areas we had talked about ourselves, about vacation time and bad, like, could that give me a little, I could cheat sheet, if you will? Hate to use the word, but, but that would help me. Maybe everybody else. Could that be done?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Stady, uh, we have prepared, Michelle has prepared a memorandum that does exactly that. We can certainly share that with each of the commissioners. So as you read the document, you'll have a running start on what those changes and evolutions look like.
Okay, great. Okay. And so, okay, that's what I wanted. That's all I wanted to know. If we can get it before the weekend, if possible, because we can use it to study and review. Okay?
Joe, you want to say anything?
Yeah, if you like it, I, I don't mind highlighting some of the enhancements, just since you're, since we're all on this call.
I can't do it. I would hate to say it. I've got to give you another call, too. And we've got Opera Awards and things like that. I mean, it's funny. If you want, well, if you want it, it's.
Oh, no, I'd like to get it down.
I would look for a written thing. I'd like to have something in front of me so I can then take the document, compare it, and kind of highlight it through, but, um.
I can do something, and I, I thought it was sent out, but I'll, I'll make sure you get it.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Are there any other votes that you need, John, before, um, Richard has to head to the other meeting?
Yes.
All right. And this, this concludes for today, a Norfolk County employee handbook, a long-awaited. We're all excited. So we're gonna, I'll take a motion to keep this, to hold this over to next week and put it on next week's agenda.
Well, we're quick. I'm not trying to belabor it. But John, who else, who else besides you and Michelle were also involved with this? I'm sorry. Who else I didn't put on it?
Uh, the Collins Group.
Yeah.
Which was their vendor. And of course, we accepted feedback from every single department head, or not every department responded, but we extended to every single department head plus, uh, the schools. So.
So Aggie School, Registry of Deeds, all the department heads, we're given a chance to weigh in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. On the record to show that. Okay, good. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Number ten, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Richard, you want me to read it?
Yeah, please. Yeah, please.
Uh, so I'll make a motion for the first warrant, twenty-four dash twenty-two payroll to the county in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote next.
Next is warrant twelve, one, twenty-four, expense of the county in the amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote next.
The next is warrant twenty-four dash oh six, expense of the school in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents. So moved.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
Next is, uh, warrant twelve, four, twenty-three, Walston Recreation Facility credit card payment in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. That includes payroll expense warrants for today. Number eleven. Report on American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one. We have several awards today, so we're gonna take eleven and twelve together and go right to Director Cronin. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Uh, good afternoon, commissioners. It's been several weeks since, um, Opera Awards have been before you. Um, we're pleased to return with, uh, four applications for your consideration. The first is a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, um, to offset or to need to pay for, um, premium pay benefits to certain Norfolk County agricultural school staff. Um, in this matter, the schools have proposed and the commissioners will, uh, consider approval for, um, the pay benefit to selected members of the staff that perform work on the campus during the school year of May, two thousand and twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, this particular total is one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The next particular award is also back to Norfolk County itself. This amount is eighty thousand dollars. Um, the treasurer had approached, uh, the county with a request to create a financial literacy program. This particular program would benefit senior citizens, high school age students, and those that are not proficient with computers and not, and do not attend college. Um, this particular program will include, as I said, eighty thousand dollars to support, uh, personnel to go out into the community and distribute this much-needed financial advice to those affected, uh, or disaffected groups, as stated. The third one is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to the town of Medfield. In this matter, it is a revenue replacement for a front-end loader, purchase of a front-end loader for use at the Medfield Transfer Station, one hundred and ninety thousand. And the last one is also to the town of Medfield, three thousand, five hundred dollars for, under revenue replacement, for secure ballot slash payment Dropbox. Those are your four Opera requests before you today. Uh, with these awards, you are now at or just above ninety-five million dollars dispersed to date. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, commissioners?
What's the total again, Mr. John Cronin? What, what?
The, the total to date is just over ninety-five million dollars.
Wow, incredible. Incredible. It's fantastic.
Okay. All right, now, number eleven is the US Program Warrants for Approval. Just mention the town, and then we'll do each one individually.
Sure.
County of Norfolk, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a premium pay program.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It's for the treasurer's.
Nope, that's the.
Literacy?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Next one is the treasurer's, uh, program, eighty, eighty thousand dollars for the financial literacy program.
So moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Medfield?
Yes, sir. One hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a front-end loader.
Right. For, I'll so move it.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Another.
Last one is thirty-five hundred, town of Medfield, and that is for a, uh, ballot Dropbox.
Right. So moved.
Second. Ballot Dropbox. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye. That's good, though. It's good. Good job.
It stays out during all of, uh, all of early voting outside of the town hall.
That's right.
I thought it already had it, but maybe they need a fixed new one. That's good.
There you go.
Anything else on today for Opera?
Do you want an Opera report? Very briefly, there's one item I wanted to communicate to the, uh, commissioners. I think this would fall under, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act number eleven, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Uh, relative to the report, we've had a breakthrough with the town of Brookline. Um, we, uh, after many attempts, uh, the town administrator has responded to me this past week. Um, he apologized for, um, a period of time when we were not communicating. He was tied up with a very, um, challenging town meeting scheduled this fall. Um, we are scheduling a Zoom call. I think it's either tomorrow or Friday to go over with him and his staff, um, some of the strategies that they're moving forward on, and also to try and, um, refine their prompt, uh, their premium pay application, which is one of the largest, uh, single awards that is still stuck in the portal awaiting more feedback from Brookline. But the town administrator is very gracious, um, and welcoming to our interest in helping them move forward. I want to also thank, uh, Advisory Board Chairwoman Elizabeth Childs for her assistance in communicating our interest to the select board within Brookline to move this forward. So that's good news. We're, uh, hoping, hoping to get Brookline on board very soon. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, no other further questions for Director Cronin. Number thirteen, bid openings, we have none. Number fourteen, contracts and awards, we have none. Number fifteen. Vote to authorize the county, the chairman of the county commission to sign the authorization letter for a sign design, Inc., to act as a contractor agent on behalf of the county commissioners as the owners of President's Golf Course and Walson Recreation Facility, three fifty-seven West Quanum Street, Quincy, oh, two, one, seven, oh. For the town of Milton, sign permit approval application and online portal, portal. Further vote to authorize Sign Design Inc. to act as the owner and authorize contractors and agents to fill out and sign the online sign application of such. This is the final move in all of the new signage that we put into place. Um, back, back earlier in twenty-three and twenty-four, this is the particular sign, uh, that is going to go on state property at the rear of our property. Right before we get on the expressway, there's a sign designating Norfolk County Golf Course. So it's replacing the old one. And it took, because it was an extra step to go to the state, it took that much longer. So this will be the last new sign. This is the authorization that they need. I have a copy here in front of me. It says, same as I read. Request the county commission to sign and act upon the matter, and then they can go ahead and, uh, erect a sign. All the notification to be given to the town of Milton Planning Board and Community Development Staff and the city of Quincy also has signed off.
I'll make the motion to, uh, authorize the chairman, uh, to sign the authorization letter for Doc, for Sign Design.
Right. So this is a, um, replacement sign. It's not a new sign, right? This is a replacement?
But it's a total replacement. Right.
Great. Okay. Yep.
First of all, you and I knew from the old sign.
Yep.
And secondly, it was in decrepit condition and the change, the laws governing signage on state property have changed, so this will be a state-of-the-art, up-to-date sign.
Terrific. That'd be great. Okay, great. Well, I'll second that motion. Sounds good. Sounds good.
Okay. Any other commission, any other comments on this, uh, signage of the permit to, the last sign to golf course? Motion made and seconded.[1545.28] Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero. Okay, that almost completes our agenda. If, if anyone has to leave, but we're gonna go right to the next subject, which is emergency, no.
Report of the county director.
Report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have a couple of items. One, um, of more serious nature. Very briefly, we received a letter from, um, the Dedham Square Group, um, Dedham Square Circle, thanking the Commissioners for the use of Registry of Deeds law with the trunk, trunk-or-treat event on October twenty-eighth, which was a huge success, bringing in an estimated four thousand to five thousand people to Dedham Square on, on that day. It was very appreciative. In addition, um, I'll read briefly a letter that was, or an email that Mr. Buckley received relative to your new weights and measures program from the town of Needham. Ms. Lynn Hines wrote, "I cannot tell you what a pleasure it is working with you folks. Bill Mullin is second to none, always happily available to help me understand something, to perform an emergency scale test, or to talk with a client on the phone. Thank you so much for working with us, and please never stop helping us. I cannot go back to the old ways. Happy holidays."
That's great.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Very good stuff. Um, this afternoon, I wish to announce to the Commissioners, uh, my recommendation that effective next week, uh, it'll be before you on a, uh, an agenda, but looking ahead a little bit, as a result of, uh, dropping, declining revenues, which I think we've been discussing for the last several months, the county finds itself in a position where it is approximately one million sixty-two thousand dollars below our revenue projections for fiscal year twenty-four. Um, these revenue estimates are based upon what we know today. Uh, however, taking action at virtual mid-year is prudent. And as a result, I'm going to recommend a hiring freeze and a spending freeze effective December thirty, thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, in order to address the current deficiency, and I'll explain this further next week uh, with you and the Advisory Board and the Finance Committee, we plan to, um, um, take approximately three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars um, or three hundred fifty thousand dollars, excuse me, in existing FY twenty-three savings that we know are baked into our budget. I'll give you those details next week. Uh, those include, um, not filling vacant positions and not funding certain initiatives that were put into the budget. Those savings, along with seven hundred, excuse me, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the remaining supplemental budget balance will provide this, a sufficient cash set aside for us to meet our obligations between now and June thirtieth. Uh, it is December sixth. A lot can change between now and June thirtieth. But, uh, putting a freeze in place, managing your existing budget, and setting aside sufficient supplemental funds to, um, address any revenue shortfalls is the prudent financial step to take at this time. Things can change. Uh, obviously, if we see uh, revenue changing over the next, um, several months that, um, might reflect a more favorable position, we can alter, um, this amount of set aside in order to balance FY twenty-four. Uh, so I wanted to give you this news today, and, and any of those individuals listening, a little bit of advance notice that, uh, unfortunately, because of our revenue position, we will have to, uh, consider taking this action. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we're gonna discuss it on as an agenda.
It'll be a vote next week, but I wanted to
Can I ask a very quick question? Very quick. I know we're gonna talk about it next week, but thank you, John, for that, uh, presentation. Is, are you recommending, are you suggesting for next week that we vote a, when you say a freeze, would this be for any new hires? What if someone had, like, for example, I noticed today, Maintenance had two people retire, resign, so those are open positions. Would they be allowed to fill them?
No.
They, I'm sorry?
No, sir.
No? Okay, so it's like no new hiring at all? Not new positions?
I reached out to, um, the, um, the head of ASME to begin a dialogue with them regarding this action, um, so that they understand from an impactful standpoint how the county needs to manage its resources, um, to remain solvent. You can look at it another way, Commissioner Stady. In the event that the model stays true and we backfill any number of positions, you're creating a situation where if we end fiscal year twenty-four in a deficiency, we may have to lay people off. And it's something we should try to avoid, knowing what we know today. A million-dollar deficiency on a big budget our size is a considerable hole to fill. So, uh, holding these vacancies, uh, until such time as we find ourselves more solvent is the prudent recommendation. So, uh, we understand that this is uh, an impact with the unions, and we intend to have further conversations with them about how this can be managed.
Is that recommended for the schools as well, or just outside?
Uh, at the time, when this comes out, the motion will be to exclude the schools.
Okay, that's all I have for now. That's all for now. Thank you. Thank you.
But we want to, we want to give it a good airing next weekend.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Okay. Okay.
County Director, any, anything else to report?
No, sir.
Number sixteen, emergency items or topics the chair did not recently anticipate. I don't have any. I just want to extend our best wishes to John Marinucci um, and Robert Page of our Public Building Department, who uh, have put in their papers to retire various dates in this month, and wish them well. Anything else?
So just for the record, we're meeting as a board, uh, it's posted, I'm sure, with the other county commissioners on Friday, correct?
Friday at noon in New Bedford.
At eleven o'clock?
Yeah, eleven o'clock.
Okay.
Eleven, I'm sorry, I'm eleven. I'll call you about that, Commissioner.
Right, no problem. Okay, I've got a bug out, otherwise, if you want to adjourn, but I don't want to rush it.